I think that's what they want me to do is pass out the gate holes to me and I have no idea why.
It's the, uh, report from, uh, the job.
It's one of those things that you, you know, gotta do it once in a lifetime. Or you do it two times, or in the morning when they depart.
Oh.
I like.
It's the only day of the year I get to wear them.
Well.
They form before, in the evening as the sun is setting, then you see it coming in and all of a sudden you're looking way up and you see these dots and they're simple.
Down the way. Yeah, well, we're similar.
They're coming in and it's just like an airplane and suddenly as they get lower, suddenly ear down and their legs come down. And they're sitting going like someone.
Mr. Manager, it's three P M. Are you ready to?
I am.
Are we on the air?
We are on the air.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. Time for the meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the Gateway Services Community Development District. We have a quorum. Please stand and join us in a pledge to our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. If you have a noise-making machine like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. If you wish to speak to the board, there are forms, um, near the door to fill out and, um, give to the manager. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Before we start, Mr. Manager, uh, I'm gonna take the prerogative of the chair and introduce a resolution for the board's consideration. Resolution is like this. Whereas the Gateway Services C D D has owned and operated the Sherman's Soccer Complex for many years, and whereas thousands of youth have participated and had good life-building experiences, and whereas there has been conversation leading some to believe that this board has made unreasonable demands on the sponsor of the soccer league, which could lead to its dissolution, therefore be it resolved by this board determines that soccer will stay at the Sherman Soccer Complex and that no financial reports are necessary of the sponsor and that no further demands or conversation are necessary to implement this resolution. I so move. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Conversation?
Why?
Why?
I didn't ask for bluster. I just asked for a response.
Well, I'm gonna give you folks, if you.
I don't need to bluster.
If you have, if you have no idea that there is conversation going around, that the board is even going so far as to consider selling the Sherman Soccer Complex, then you're not as up to date on the issues as I expected you to be.
How would you expect me to be? You haven't transpired any of that information as any kind of information. So it's supposed to be, uh, uh, get this by osmosis or some such animal because of whatever?
I'm giving it to you right now, Gary, and.
Okay, so now that you're giving me the information that you assumed, let's break down that word for an English teacher, that we knew this, how about giving the information first?
Secondly, uh, the, there are residents who believe that the whole soccer program that we've had for many years is in jeopardy and the thousands of students, uh, who participate in that, uh, are, uh, are unlikely to, uh, have a soccer program after this year. And I think it is time to put this whole darn thing to bed. We have messed around with it now for almost a year and I wanna see a soccer program at the Sherman Soccer Complex as long as possible.
Okay, in rebuttal, no one up here has said anything regarding the fact of canceling a soccer program. You just said thousands of kids play per year. How many thousands?
Hundreds of thousands.
Here?
Listen, if you wanna, if you wanna argue, put a reasonable argument on.
You're asking for a resolution that makes some statement of something and what you're doing is answering the people that are creating responses that we aren't making. You don't respond to people that create that kind of dogma. If you're gonna do anything, then communicate, which has been requested of this board on and on and on. Go tell the people what's real. Don't create motions and et cetera to answer people that are creating rumor. Inform the people.
This ought to inform them. Pam or Margaret, do you have any conversation?
Um, I do wanna say that this board has never, you know, said that we would, uh, stop the soccer program. That's never been an issue for us. And we had asked the soccer team and the little league football team to provide us with financial statements, which I don't think that's unreasonable. Uh, however, I do not wanna get into a, uh, dogfight, uh, about the soccer team. We don't intend to, to stop it, so if we have to agree with this resolution, so be it.
I, I don't see any problem with the resolution. I think it'll ease some minds out there that are getting misinformation. I personally don't have to see anybody's financial statements. I didn't need to see the Christian Soccer Associations. I don't need to see the Gateway Soccer Association's financials. If, if that's not how we should decide as a board who uses the fields, I think that's a wrong approach. I'm not quite sure what significance the financials show. I've never really understood why they've been requested in the first place, but I have said it in previous meetings. I don't need to see the financials. As long as they can pay what we asked them to pay to rent the fields, that's all that counts.
Thank you. Yeah. If a bully approaches you and a bully starts making misstatements of what you've stated and you back down to that bully, shame on you. The fact that this whole thing, let's go back in history. This whole thing was the idea of a guy by the name of Roger Sherman, who I met personally eight years ago before he sadly passed away. The whole idea of that and the fact of the Christian Soccer Association and the fact of sharing their thing was because Roger, who lived here, knew very well that we were going to be putting an awful lot of money of the residents and residents who don't have kids that are involved in soccer and people that aren't even residents that are involved. And you've got one guy here that's profitizing on it, but back to Roger, Roger didn't make a profit in any way, shape, or form. Neither did the Christian Soccer Association in any way, shape, or form. And they wanted the community to know that they were more than willing to share their financials with us and how Margaret can forget that, I can't imagine, because she was here at that time. In fact, started like me at that time. This gentleman that's come in to utilize thousands of kids regarding this, how many of those kids are even from Gateway? And again, we're talking about spending seventy-plus thousand dollars on lights and we represent all of the people that are out there, including the people that don't have kids in the program and including the people that do. And if somebody is starting bad rumors, then again, shame on us for not communicating back to the community. If anything, if you wanna draw something up, draw up a letter that's signed by all of the supervisors, put it on the website and tell the public what the reality is, not what this gentleman's reality apparently is, which I'm deducting from what you're saying that I don't know about what this guy's talking about. Frankly, if that's the way it's being stated, maybe don't wanna know what he's talking about. But we should state, we're the ones that are the stewards of all of the monies for these people. We're the ones that are spending right now, what, in our, our meeting booked today, over eleven thousand dollars to handle the nematodes? We aren't fighting that and to let this person use that as a tactic and then to turn around and draft a resolution, you're just falling into that. Where this started was something that was for the community and for the kids. It's drifted away from that. Also sadly, it was stuff that wasn't maintained as it properly should have been maintained and now we're the ones that are having to pick up a lot of that. Having said that, I still don't think you draft this thing as an answer to somebody that's spreading incorrect statements. You instead communicate with the people that we serve, tell them what we're doing, talk about the things and monies that we're spending on. I've said for eight years, we don't communicate enough. We don't communicate enough with the people that have got lake bank problems, et cetera. We need to communicate, not draft resolutions.
Are you quite finished?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say one thing in response to Gary. I remember quite well how the Christian Soccer Association was badgered until they did provide their financials and then they were picked apart by more than one of the supervisors that served at the time. And I, I just, I thought it was inappropriate at the time and I don't wanna go down that road again. That's just my comment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, uh, as this has been added on as an action item, I would suggest that the chair open it to the public, whether anybody in the public wants to sign up to speak on this topic, since it was not on the agenda, but it is an action item.
Correct.
Anyone in the, in the audience wanna speak about the continuance or discontinuance of the Soccer Association? Name and address, please.
Judy Eagle Point Circle. My last name is Peak. Uh, just in regard, you know, I don't know anything about it, but the lesser of the two evils to me is if you're taking kids and putting them in activity rather than being somewhere they don't need to be, it's a great consideration for me. I don't have grandchildren there. I don't have any children there. But I, I have worked with children all my life and I would just think it would be the greater evil to take something apart that you would dismantle piece by piece and children would stray in this way and that way and whatever way. And please take that into consideration.
Well, let me respond to that. Where did you hear that we were doing that? Are you talking about what we just have been discussing here? You took away from that discussion that we have in any way, shape, or form? And you sit in on an awful lot of meetings, when did we ever say that we were going to take this and we were no longer gonna have this?
I didn't say that. I said if.
We haven't stopped thinking about kids. How, how did you do that?
Well, I didn't say that you did. I said if, if it was taken away or if, and I think you missed the if, but, uh, for me, it would be a great disservice to think that children would be, and you see them straying everywhere. So if, if that happened, and, and I'm not saying it's going to come to that. I'm just saying, once you start picking things apart, things start falling apart, it historically, yeah. So that's just my two cents worth. I mean, for what it's worth.
Thank you very much. Any others? Uh, vote on the resolution. On favor, say aye. Aye.
I did wanna say one other thing. I'm sorry. I do think that the issue here is more of how to communicate uh, against what's been said, against the board. And I, I understand, I think I understand what Gary is saying, that maybe it would be better to put something on the site saying that that was never a consideration of the board to shut down the soccer field. That was, we've never talked about shutting down the soccer field. So in a way, having this resolution kinda gives this thing legs on something that we've never talked about. We've never said that we were gonna set, set down the soccer field. And I think we should let the people know that that was never a consideration for the board. And I guess what, what I'm trying to understand is what is the best way to get that message forward to the community?
I appreciate that comment and I think that this is a very good way to get that message to the community, just like we got the message to the community by a vote of this board when we, when the word was going out that we were gonna call, uh, make all kinds of changes in the Gateway Pool. Here's another one that, uh, is creeping up on us little by little and we are in fact threatening the Gateway Soccer Association. If they don't do certain things, they're not gonna have a contract after June thirtieth. Now that to me is a threat. It's a threat to the soccer session. It's a threat to the, uh, the, the students and participants, the players and the parents. And I for one think now is the time to put a end to it.
When a person makes a threat, you don't, and, and the, and the statement that they're making is grossly egregiously false, you don't create a resolution. You communicate and that's the problem that we've had for eight years that I've been here. I can't comment before, but I have the right to comment now. Draft something and communicate to the public.
This is communicating to the public?
This is the wrong way to communicate to the public.
You think the great way is to tell the Soccer Association that they're not gonna have a contract unless they bend?
Who said that? You just said it, Bill, and it's been misconstrued by the lady right here standing at the podium.
Mr. Senior said it and I think you backed it up.
You're, Bill, you're way out of base and if you wanna take your position and use your position to draft a letter to the community, then go do it. But don't start throwing around resolutions like now the community's gonna understand. No, they don't. The young lady out there didn't understand. It's not gonna be understood until you communicate in a public venue, whether it be the website, take a page in the corridor, whatever. Start communicating to the people. It's the same thing that draws the, what's happening with the lakes and this recent thing that happened about the lake banks. We're not communicating so people can draw their own conclusions.
Are we ready to vote on them?
But, uh, I, I, I think that in issues getting confused, there, there really can accomplish both objectives. Go ahead and post something like Supervisor, uh, Newbauer has suggested. But the way I interpret your resolution that's been presented tonight is that you just wanna take this off your agenda. You're wasting, or not wasting, but you're putting a lot of time into it and, and you just wanna go forward on more critical issues that the community's confronted with and, uh, so this isn't gonna be discussed anymore. But the reaction to the rumors and innuendos, uh, could be communicated in an article on the website.
Thank you very much.
Could we make an adjustment to that and, I, you know, it's just the word, this is, I just, you know, I'll let it go because it's, it's not worth putting a lot of time in because we've never said this and this is almost an admission of guilt of something that we've never done. That's, that is my issue. If the wording was different, I would, I wouldn't have any problem with it. But we've never said that we would set the soccer field.
And, and you're right. And why resolve something? This isn't a resolution-type situation and if Cal's thing is, well, we don't have time to talk about it. Yeah, we do. We've always got time for it. We need to make time for this. We need the community to know that we'll make time for it. We need the community to know that, no, that isn't it. And if somebody is out there churning these kinds of rumors, then we go back with communication, which, sorry, we should've communicated before that. Well, we didn't. We start. If you wanna make the resolution, make the resolution that it's about doggone time to start communicating what we're doing here to the people that we serve. Now that's a resolution. I'll support it.
I think we've had enough conversation about it. Uh, all in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Three to one. Thank you very much.
I do think that it'd be nice if we, if, and it's probably coming from you, the chairman, some sort of a letter that we can post on the website would be a nice idea to just throw that out.
I will, I think that's a great idea and I will be happy to do that. But from the conversations that we've had on this issue in the last six months, I think that anything that I write is going to be edited and re-edited and re-re-edited. But I will give it, I will give it my best shot. Thank you very much. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we are ready for public participation. Mr. Manager, do we have folks that would like to speak to the board?
Yes, sir. We have two and Kathy Flaherty and she'd like to talk about the pool.
Kathy Flaherty, one-two-five-six-six, Stony Brook. No, Stony, yeah. It is, is a, actually, this is a puzzle. I'm hoping that you can solve this puzzle. A resident came to me and they go to water aerobics and they have their card, but they have to sign in and their address. And the gentleman who's there stops the water aerobics if they don't sign in. Now, she went in the afternoon and just used her card to get in. She's wondering, she's not here right now. She moved back, went up north. She's wondering why she has to do two different things. It's not consistent. Why would she have to sign in if she has a card? So that's a puzzle.
Is she signing in for the class?
Why do they have, she wants to know, why do they have to sign in for the class if they have a card? All, all the person needs is a number that's there.
I don't, I don't, I'm guessing, I'm just guessing that they want to know who's actually attending the water aerobics class.
I don't know. That's the puzzle. She asked me to text her, my, your answer.
We, I think we need a lot more facts than you.
That's all I know.
Thank you very much. Any, Mr. Manager, any others?
Yes, sir. Bob Gepard, uh, and, uh, three questions, like twenty, like, uh, twenty-eight and the damage to, uh, pipe or drainage pipe cleaning.
I'll defer on that till he comes to his side. That's it, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing has been advertised to consider the adoption of amendments to our rules of procedure concerning competitive solicitation to provide the district, to provide that the district may pre-qualify purchase contractors or entities and instances involving maintenance services for any district facility or project. Uh, I am hereby declaring that this public hearing is open and I would invite members of the audience first and then board members to make any comments they would like pertaining to the subject of this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before, are there any participation by the public or by, by the board?
I thought I did that just perfect.
Yes, sir, you did. That was excellent. But if I may, also just for the record, as reflected in the memorandum and the agenda packet, uh, are the affidavits of publication of the notice of rule development and the affidavit of publication of the notice of today's public hearing. And I was trying to confirm with Cal in April that no inquiries have been made of the district staff or copies and no one's asked for a statement of regulatory cost or provided, uh, requested to provide an estimate of regulatory costs.
Well, thank you very much.
And, and a couple of the comments, if I may, uh, I had some, I proposed, I have a revised document that if I can hand out to the board, I folded it to the page with some possible further revised language that has been suggested to be added, uh, which I think would be helpful and members of the public wanna have copies I have available to members of the public.
Thank you.
And I've noted it on the third page or fourth page of the oral arrow, uh, through official proposed revised language.
Who inserted this?
Uh, the chairman and I had a conversation and I inserted that after having that discussion. I think it's a positive assertion, insertion. And once again, it's a board's policy decision as to whether they wish to adopt the proposed amendment as, as provided, as proposed and revised, or any further changes or suggestions, uh, to the proposed language. Mr. Manager or Mr. Chairman, we have some comments, I think provided by Mr. Senior in a memorandum. I don't know if we all have that.
Yeah, it was forwarded to the board.
Okay.
But I also suggest, in light of communication, that you put it right now on public record why we're doing this, so that it's not misconstrued by anybody.
Yes.
I think that's a very excellent idea.
And it also becomes part of the minutes.
I think it's a very good.
What became part of the minutes?
Your dissertation.
Oh, my dissertation, my coming dissertation.
Just start on.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the audience and of the board, whenever, whenever the board deems it necessary to amend its rules, it has to do so after advertising, uh, and give the audience as well as the board members a chance to comment upon the proposed changes. This, uh, change is one that would allow the board and its management to pre-qualify bidders so that instead of waiting until a few, a few weeks before a contract has to be let and work begin, that we scour the county and even the, uh, part of the state to find competent bidders who, once we have the, uh, specification put together, can bid on this contract. While we were talking about it earlier, it was brought to our attention that very few bidders read the legal notices in the newspaper, although they are still required by law. Instead of that, uh, many of the bidders re, uh, refer to an electronic service that provides a database of those items that are going to be up for bid. So this amendment to the amendment, if you will, uh, is one that would allow the management and the board, if, uh, they deem it necessary, to not only, uh, advertise in a newspaper of general circulation, but also to advertise this, uh, on an electronic database. Mr. Manager, have I said that about right? Sir?
Very well said. Yes, sir.
The only thing that I would also want you to specify is your new portion here. Since we have a district manager who would be making the decisions on who to hire, that there should be a provisor that indicates the fact that they can't be associated with his company.
Are you asking that we, uh, go ahead and read section seven and As through Eights? Is that, is that?
Well, there's further revised here, Bill, which gives that gentleman over there, as handsome as he is, the capability of hiring anybody that happens to be associated with Severn Trent. So we want our constituents to know that they're, we're not trying to have something that could be a conflict of interest.
Uh, that's exactly right. What precisely would you like to add in?
Communicate, sir.
Yeah, uh, if I may, if I may, may I step in briefly? Uh, from the perspective of the additional language, it says further revised, that, those are third-party vendors that provide that service, DemandStar, OnVR. There's some other services out there where you subscribe to it and you, you receive push notifications or electronic updates and it goes to a third-party vendor. It doesn't, it's called DemandStar. It's a big company. And from the perspective of the conflict of interest, I understand because of the statutory scheme that's out there that provides, need to be careful on that. I would, uh, I'm not sure how to draft it incorporated in this.
Well, I know that this gentleman who is conspicuously absent had, in some time, meetings before, discussed the fact that Severn Trent was using their own contractors in. involved with the new meter installations, and we were having some problems with them. I wouldn't like to have a repeat of that, and I don't think any of us would. And that, by the way, Mr. and Mrs. Public...
Say, say again, say that one more time.
That's something that the entire board agrees upon, that we're here to make sure that we provide them with the best services possible.
We're on a front-cost effective, et cetera, et cetera.
No conflict of interest, et cetera, et cetera.
The way I understood the suggested revision that the attorney has prepared, this would not supersede any legal obligations or restrictions. No rule can create or override legal implications, and the attorney...
State law, you mean.
That's correct, and I was just thinking, and what, it does not hurt, though, if you want to add a sentence in the, and once again, the only portion of the rules that's up for amendment is Section A dash one point oh six. So, if we are to add language in there, it can be inserted, just generally, I'll call it in the scope, or catch-all language at the end with regards to that, the stat, the provisions of Chapter one, it's Chapter one twelve for statutes that deals with conflict of interest shall be complied with. And I can, and I can add that under, under a contract manager, because it says the board may designate a representative to function as a contract manager who's responsible. So, with the board's indulgence, if the board is inclined at the end of the public hearing to adopt this proposed amendment to Section A dash one point oh six as presented and further revised with regards to the electronic notification process, I can also add language to Section A dash one point oh six F that says, all actions shall be governed by and consistent with the Florida Code of Ethics, Chapter one twelve Florida statutes.
Yep.
And I'm comfortable because that provides for the situation by virtue of an amendment. A few years ago, the district managers are now subject to that in certain circumstances.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, so no other comments from the audience? I'd like to invite board members to make any comments about this change in the rules.
I don't have any comment.
All right, hearing no comments from, I declare this public hearing on these rules closed, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt the amendments to the rules of procedure.
I just have one quick question. The comments that were submitted in writing, Mr. Newbauer had made reference to from Mr. Senior, are they okay to just be attached to part of the minutes? Tony?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it'd be to be included in the minutes, so, as opposed to reading them out loud, in other words?
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
I make a motion to adopt.
This is with...
With Tony's.
With Tony's.
The two further revisions are one that's handed out today, as well as the additional provision today.
Make sure that that's specified.
Yes, sir.
With the revision.
Second.
Motion and a second. With all of the amendments discussed, either provided by our attorney or discussed today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next thing I have on my agenda is a presentation by Mr. Bill Pricey of Landscape Architects Inc. Mr. Pricey, I believe?
Mr. Pricey is here.
That must be you. Can you give us just a one-minute overview of who you are, about your firm, and what you intend to tell us today?
Oh, in that respect, I'm Bill Pricey with Land Architects. I've been hired by this board to, to conduct your roadway master plan, and basically here today to discuss the proposals that I put forth based on some of the information that was garnered during that presentation, and some of the limitations that the then district manager, Scott Connell, had, had placed on me. And that's what broke this down into basically two different agreements. One was based on a budget, and the other one was based on a fuller, broader scope. So, that's kind of what I'm here to present to you guys for your decision.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm going to trust that you guys have gotten that information on these two proposals here, and basically, I guess the easiest thing for me to do would be to break down the differences and the nuances between the two. And just to preface where I'm going with this, whichever direction you guys choose to take, we're prepared to execute one way or the other.
Yes. This is it, this is it. Thank you very much.
Okay, of the two proposals, one is based on a limited budget of twenty-five thousand dollars that was allocated for this fiscal year. The other proposal is based on a broader scope, looking at the holistic nature of the master plan and the ability to bring in public participation and to conduct workshops and that effect. And in doing so, that takes a little longer, and of course, costs a little more to execute on our part. And part and parcel in that larger concept, proposal and scope of work, is the level of graphics that it would take to convey and communicate that information in a public format. In the lesser version, there's not as much graphics, therefore, there's not as much time, and there's not as much product involved, and it can be executed at a lesser cost. One of the other differences is that in doing so, in doing that, the public, the public presentations are more presentations, they're limited in conveying information, and in the full scope, they are full-blown workshops that are more unlimited in time, give more opportunity for, for discourse and feedback to get pros and cons from the community and implement it into that master plan. Part of the other aspect of that is also that we could put information in a website form, either in a standalone or as a additional page onto yours that helps convey that information out to the public. Because one of the ways of looking at the fuller scope is really is that public outreach getting a buy-in, getting people involved in it. That way, people don't seem as surprised that when they come up with a master plan, that I may not, or I might, or I may not like that. So, it's a little more of an involved process in that regard. And just to sum up the two, the way they are structured, the budgeted version, of course, is based on the amount of money you allocate to this fiscal year. The full version has been broken down that we can execute the first two tasks based on that allocated budget, and allowing for the second course, which is the more, more involved final master plan version, would be done in the next fiscal cycle so that you could allocate more funds for the difference in those, in those proposals. So, I think that's about the cleanest and most wordless, or the least amount of words to sum that up.
Thank you. Please stay at the podium, and I'd like to invite the board members to ask questions of you. Margaret, would you like to start?
No.
Pam? Gary?
Bill, may I call you Bill?
You may.
Thank you.
You may call him Gary.
Hi, may I call you Gary?
Iron straight, at least to my face. From what I understand from Rod's input, he's very pro on you because of the fact that you do a, and this is a question, a virtual type of situation as far as the presentation of your design, is that true?
We call it virtual design, and it, it's more of a three-dimensional presentation of the design elements. And that's really kind of what we're alluding to, that does take a little more of an involved process to do that.
Having said that, is that in your estimates, guestimates?
That's in the full version. In the limited version, what I call the budgeted version, you'd get one per segment, one on the three, the three primary segments. And also, in the full version, we, we include some of the additional segments that Ellen Scott had talked about when we were in contract negotiations. That's to include the common areas along Daniels, the medians on West Links, and the main entry feature on Gateway Boulevard.
So, the difference between the budget version and the non-budget version is how many bid, how many virtials?
Yeah, there would be, there's six segments in the full version with maximum of three, I think it was three each, so they give you eighteen versus one each on three, so there's, it's...
Eighteen versus six?
So, you're, no, eighteen versus three.
Versus three.
So, you're getting six times as many.
And from the best of your recollection, the difference in cost for eighteen versus three is going to be, at the best price that you're going to give my, my mother will be...
I'm telling you, this is, even as the firm principal, I'm even nervous presenting this, because it's, it's, sometimes you look at projects like this, and you go, yeah, am I going to, how am I going to survive that one?
I understand.
But I really have fine-tuned this down, and it's my job as, as the project manager and a firm principal, to make sure we do it effectively and efficiently.
You have broad shoulders, Bill. Keep going.
The difference between that, I think, is about, I don't have to be very specific on that one. That is, that master plan is, the final master plan is eighty-seven fifty, and in the budgeted one, I believe it is about thirty-five hundred. So, it's about five thousand dollars more.
Five thousand dollars for an additional fifteen.
The final master plan is, well, let me, let me back up. It's, in the budgeted version, the final master plan is fourteen-five. I should have these numbers ingrained in my head.
Where do I find, where do I find fourteen-five?
That's in the, if you look in category number three, that's where we define that final master plan portion. And, and in the broader version, it is twenty-four-three.
So, the difference in cost of the two is...
About ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars for another fifteen videos. So, we're talking about seventy dollars of video?
Or their, their images.
Those, well, they're digital.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
And we would be able then, included in those prices, to be able to put it on our district website so that we could better communicate?
That's the beauty of, of the digital graphics, is you can, you can put them on websites, you can send them in emails.
Okay. Is there anything else for that quantity of money, other than the virtials that we're getting for that?
You're also getting a more detailed cost estimate on our part, plus you're getting a management plan recommendations on our part.
Okay.
Which in talking with Scott was an important, and with L was, is really getting, you know, what we, what we're presenting as, you're professional, is trying to bring the management aspects together, because it's real important we find out what your issues are and convey that into the final product.
And we could, through that, convey that through the website also to the people we serve?
Yes.
Good answer, Bill. I know Pam's going crazy.
Well, I just wanted to ask one question while you were...
No, go, go, fire away.
Is that the full version, or is that just, when you gave him the price, was that the full version versus the budgeted version of, of what we would get? He said one was thirty-three?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Just for category three.
Just for...
So, you're looking at fifteen-three on what's currently quoted versus twenty-three-three something.
Yeah, that's when you put the two tasks together.
For category three.
Basically, it's three, two, and a, yeah, you're putting the, the final task of putting that master plan together.
Okay.
That's where that difference is. But there's, you're, you're dealing with twice as many road segments, you're dealing with six times as many images, and you're dealing with website coordination and management plans that aren't associated with the lesser version. So, that's where the, that's where the distinction in cost is, because there is a totally different level of service on those two.
And Pam just asked April if that's doable, April?
Is that doable, April?
You mean in the, you mean in the budget?
Yes.
The way that I understand it, there was twenty-five thousand in this year, and he's talking about spreading it over to do the full fifty-eight thousand, eight fifty, the, what is, what is that, the thirty, that's your thirty-three thousand dollars that'll be coming out of next year's budget?
And that's, and Pam also, is that compatible with our, our website system, that it would be very easily synergizing?
Why are you guys looking at me?
I'm just trying to bring you out here.
Was any of this to come out of road turned over?
No.
Just wanted, just to ask the question.
So, how does that work with next year's budget? Like, do we know anything about, we don't know?
We have to make sure that we include it.
Yeah, I mean, you're making a commitment, and it would be funded if you're included.
You are committing two additional funds for the following fiscal year.
Stevens not here.
If you cho, if you so choose to go on with those additional funds.
What's our cash position?
At the moment, we've got plenty of cash.
I, I just wanted to hear from Steven, that's all, I thought I'd put it in the record.
Well, what Steven's going to tell you is you have plenty of cash based on your priorities. You don't have plenty of cash to cover everything in your capital improvement plan, because you're looking at outside funding. But you could shift things, and if this becomes a priority, then we just have to take from somewhere else.
But we'll have to deal with that during the budgeting meetings.
Correct.
Anything else, Bill?
No.
Cal, is Steve, Steven watching?
I don't know, I could give him a call if you want. He might be.
He'll get the message.
Whatever.
Thank you, Bill, very much.
You're welcome.
We will be in touch, you can bet on that. Next item on the discussion is new playground equipment at the pool. And since I saw a sign on our front door as we came in, that the old equipment is being demolished and removed, seems like that decision has already been made.
Yeah, the, here you go. Just use mine. So, this is, you've got, let me put this up. But there's several different options. The, the problem is the equipment at the pool is in a unsafe condition, and it's been closed for a couple of months.
I know that.
So, it's starting to be tore down now.
And I, I'm very surprised and almost disappointed that it can't be refurbished, but apparently...
That was a strong consideration, and it just, it couldn't, because of the, the pipe that, that the metal had deteriorated to a point that, according to the, everyone we spoke to, it couldn't be refurbished.
When I was out examining that pool equipment, I was told by several mothers, I think they were, that were out there, that the kids were very disappointed to find out that that is closed and that they can't enjoy it, so...
So, they weren't supposed to be enjoying it now, because like you say, it's been, it's been closed for a couple of months because it is a health and safety issue.
I meant to say that the mothers told me that the students and their children are disappointed that they are not able to use it.
Yes. And it's, it's something both April and Scott received a lot of calls on, I'm sure that Anthony and L also. It is used a lot by the parents, as you say, Mr. Chairman, and that's why some options have been presented. I know Mr. Senior has asked if we couldn't use county funding. Unfortunately, this is repair and maintenance, and that, those funds aren't available for this type of activity.
April, there's, I, I looked over these two proposals that you have in here, and honestly, I noticed there's quite a bit of difference in the two, but I'm unable to tell much by just looking at it.
Right, so...
Can you help me a little bit?
April White, your operations manager, what we did here to consider the new playground is we're just looking for some direction for you, and we had, the staff had kind of went out and got some rough proposals, and these are two separate proposals. One includes a cover, one, I think, is completely a hundred percent recycled plastic. So, I just wanted to, for you to be able to get an idea of the type of funds that we're talking about to make this type of commitment, and that because it's in the pool area, and it's on the large seven and a half, half acres that we haven't fully developed, I wanted to know what your concerns and considerations were, and kind of what direction you wanted staff to take. Do we, do we look at replacing a similar structure, like the two ideas that I've presented here, or do we want to research a wet zone because it's a pool area? here, or do we want to research a wet zone, because it's a pool area? You know, the different types of things that, that you might want to consider as we pursue this, so we have an idea of what to bring back to you for approval.
Thank you. Stay right there, please.
Okay.
Members of board? Questions, thoughts, statements, anything?
Yeah.
Anyone?
Educate me when you say wet zone. What would the difference be?
The way that I understand it, I think Lakes Park has one, big flat surface, water's popping up out of the ground, a lot of plumbing, probably a higher maintenance expense. So we're trying, we're trying to prepare as we, as we plan this, because this is a long planning process. It's not, it's not a simple purchase. The way that I understand it is the play structure that is there, it will be better out of sight, because it's just too, too tempting for, for children right now. It's causing some ruckus at the pool, because they can't play with it. But it's going to be gone for a long time, because this is going to be a big project. I would like us to maybe staff to contact Lee County, and, and look at some of their park structures, possibly see if they have any pool activities at their pool locations, and try to research something, so we're, so we're certain that it's going to fit the community, and, and what we want to do there with that area. But I didn't know if it was something, because I don't know where we are with our planning phase, I didn't know if it was something, if we had ideas for the property as a whole, or if we want to go ahead and try to get a play activity center replaced, I, I'm not sure. So I'm just looking for your feedback and, and direction.
Please, are you ready for this?
You have, you have this look on your face like you-
Well, before I, you know, you're ready to go into a big spiel, I just want to ask a couple of questions. So if we just replace this equipment, the simple plan, what is the time period for that?
That I am not aware of yet. I know with what little, what little I have heard about this process, is that the playground equipment, it does have a long order period. I know, I, I think, I think just the slide was, was a several-week waiting period, and so we'd really have to do some planning, and if it's a priority, then we'll start right away. It's, but I, I do think it's a long, it's a long-term planning phase, to make sure that we select something that's appropriate for, for our pool area.
When you say long-term, you mean longer than next week, obviously, longer than next month, probably, two or three, four months?
With, with the, with the resources that we have, and the networking that I think that we should, that we should probably do, considering a, a large purchase like this, because there's safety issues involved, and there's maintenance issues involved, we need to make sure that we are better prepared for maintaining the equipment, and because it's next to the pool, it needs to be a certain type of material, where it's just, you know, it's just rusting away. I mean, I, I'm looking at, I think several months is, is reality here, for us to put something like this together with everything else going on. And, and I, I think once, once we get, once I get staff moving in the right direction, and some momentum, and, you know, maybe networking with some Lee County folks, and some of the local municipalities, so we can see what they're doing, you know, I can kind of send them off and, and get some proposals, but we kind of wanted to get that direction first.
But, and I think the question was, if, if it's not a land use, or a change in the venue that's there, just replace what you've got, so that it can be used as quickly as possible, then you're still thinking-
I'm still thinking that it's still, that either, either path we choose, it's going to be, it's going to be a few months. I, I think we would be doing a disservice if we, if we set ourselves to a more constrained time frame.
I'm sorry, please.
Thank you, I'm, I'm done.
I have the budget behind me, but my recollection is, there's nothing in the, in our budget to cover this. Does anyone feel, feel differently?
I believe, I, I am thinking that there is nothing in the budget for this, and I'm not even sure if I saw it in the CIP, so, which is another consideration, you know, if it's not, if it's not there, I mean, I, I don't know when this came about, I don't have the complete, complete history of when this came about.
May I?
Please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
How old is this equipment?
I believe it was purchased in 2006.
This one is 2006? Because we had replaced one already that had been left go, and there is basically no plan of maintenance of these pieces of equipment. We had a situation before where it rusted there at the pool, and we had to go, and I thought we had replaced it, because it had been left go, and it virtually rusted out. This was again, part of the transition period between another personnel person, et cetera, and we're back to the same issue again. First of all, we've got to establish, you and I had a brief discussion the other day, and you want the board to establish policy. I would suggest the first thing we've got to do is, especially since we now have a new staff member that's supposedly, I thought, responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of all of this stuff associated with parks, rec, et cetera, that that become part of their job description, and part of their definite responsibility. If in fact, the ops manager needs us to establish all of these policies, then I think we need to do that before we ever spend more money on putting in something new, because then it's not going to be maintained, apparently, if we haven't established that policy. So that's one of the items that would have to be done, to be able to assist April. Having said that, to put in things with supports that are rust-type, that are going to go into the ground, to me seems kind of crazy. There's all kinds of things, such as galvanized steel with tubes, and concrete inserts, and et cetera, that could be a better longevity-type situation, even PVC supports, again, filled with concrete, much longer, et cetera. But it still has to come back to the origin of the fact that we have a staff member with a backup support person, whose regular responsibility is to inspect it, fix all that stuff, you know, start with the minor rust, kind of like cleaning your teeth, you know, before the extraction occurs. We haven't done that in eight years. So, we need to establish that policy, apparently, since that's the way the management protocol works, and then got to figure out what the long-term game plan is going to be for where we're going to stick this stuff. And I think we also ought to run back to the playground over here, Fun Park, or whatever we're going to call it, its name, and there should be an evaluation of all of that equipment immediately, to figure out next. And last but not least, we should contact the fabulous Steven, and find out just what monies are available for this, because frankly, I would have expected you to know that.
And I was thinking that I looked at the CIP for this, but I, I apologize, and I'm not, I'm not sure that I do.
There's, there's nothing in the CIP. There is 30,000 in the operating budget for R and M, and this is a replacement, even though it would qualify as a, as a, a capital expenditure, and for, to date, I was going to look and see how much we've spent.
Now, what's our average R and M for parks?
I don't know.
And then if we go year-to-date, which is good, then we'll figure out what we've got real quickly.
Did we come up with a date for our strategy session?
We sent out a questionnaire asking which Saturday people would have available, the 16th doesn't work. And, you know, I was hoping that we could discuss that a little bit today.
I don't think this is something that we need to hold up. We're, we're not going to make any decisions today.
Okay, so, so we are looking at, at long-term, we're, we're in agreement with that, that we need, we need to plan this out, be thorough, because-
You spent nine thousand, so you've got-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, possibly, recognizing that the Lee County Parks impact fees, as Cal mentioned, probably so, are not available for maintenance, repair, replacement per se, if however, possibly, if we can articulate with some good empirical data, that between 2006 and 2016, that due to the population increases in Gateway, and the increased utilization, or additional equipment necessary to handle additional, you know, children, because that's, the idea of impact fees are to pay for infrastructure attributable to new growth and new demand, not replace, you know, prior facilities, just because you're replacing them. If there's a way maybe to articulate that, Cal, maybe tie up the conversations with Lee County, say, listen, 2006, the recession started, 2006, 2007, 2013, we started coming out of it, our population went zoom.
And that, that's some of the discussions we've had, is how can we package this to where it would qualify as being eligible?
At least a portion of it, maybe, like expanded facilities to accommodate the increased demand.
If, and as April had mentioned, the, the wet zones, that's an entirely new activity, and that certainly would be. But, you know, if we could discuss this during the workshop, then, you know, maybe we could go from there, find out exactly what the board would like to have done with that site, and-
You've got to give us some, some recommendations. We can't come up with this, you know, out of a whole cloth, you've got to tell us what you think makes sense to you as professionals.
Okay.
So I think that simultaneously, we can start on what type of maintenance plan, when you come back with that, what, how you intend to maintain it.
Okay, I have down the, the maintenance program, because also, that's going to be, with a lot of the activity going on in the district right now, you know, a lot of landscape, landscaping is being conveyed to us, and the maintenance responsibilities, and that'll be important, that'll be a part, important part of the budget process this year. Okay.
Okay. Board will stand and recess for 10 minutes.
It's okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to pop you off that floor. Sometimes it just feels that way. Are we off air?
Uh-
A meeting.
No. Can you hit the stop?